Good evening everybody, it is six thirty one. The school committee may seek to convene into open session and recess to an executive session for discussion and or action regarding those items of business that stem from open meeting under Gen- Rhode Island general law forty two forty six four N A, discussion and action on a personnel job performance. Executive Assistant to the superintendent in the school committee, Rhode Island general law forty two forty six five A one, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to convene in executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. Let's do it.
Me too.
I'm just people.
Good evening everybody, thank you for joining us tonight.
She's from right, she's the from the Christian homeschool group who have been here for thirty five years. Ish, not you, almost. And we talk to homeschoolers on a daily, weekly, monthly, yearly basis. And we do our best to make things really smooth, we hope, for families, for you guys, for everybody involved. So, you know, if we see something on the agenda, we had no idea what it was about, so we figured we should be here and listen. We're always willing to talk to anybody, superintendents, or the school committee, or whoever. And. Okay, so yeah, so we're just here to, I just wanted to introduce, also, I want to say thank you, because being a school committee member is not easy, especially these days. And we just really appreciate anybody who steps up to, it's not easy, so thank you.
Katie Garvin.
Oh, there you go. Hi, my name's Katie Garvin. I'm just here tonight to speak in favor of Lisa Fontaine and her project that she is hoping to get approved for a therapy dog here at Broad Rock Middle School. I actually have the identical, this is a little sidebar, I have the identical breed and age and all the things dog. And I had this dream and vision, and that's why said dog was acquired. So hers is like the alter ego, the one that like passed the tests and did the things, so now she gets to live the dream. I also work as a professional school counselor, so I can speak from the professional element of like, this is just, this could be so huge for our kids, like when you think about, you know, I don't know how many of you are pet owners, and I'm sure I'm probably preaching to the choir, because you're all probably like, yeah, 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 we're gonna say yes, it's totally fine. But when we think about kids who might be having a bad day, maybe they've got a lot going on at home, or maybe they're super stressed out about school. You let kids have thirty seconds to like get down and like rub the ears of a dog, and all of a sudden, you just you just see everything, just the shoulders go down and the stress goes down. And when we think about middle schoolers, like it just adds kind of like a, an element of sort of like fun and joy and home. I know that for my kids, I've got two girls at West Kingston, and my son is here. Every time that Leo has come to school, Leo the compassion dog, it is literally the first thing they talk about. They're like, Leo was at school, it was so great, everybody got to say hi to Leo, like they love it, even if it's like Leo's walking in a line, and they're not even like getting to like cuddle him or anything. So hopefully, this is something that, you know, the school district might be able to make it happen. I know Lisa's worked really hard at figuring out like how to make it work, you know, in this building, and, you know, obviously with all the various things, allergies, all that kind of jazz. Being mindful of that, but I just think from the standpoint of this age group in particular, right? So like, we're looking at sixth through eighth graders, obviously, we all know, mental health is at a rocky spot, could be a way to say it, and just little things like this will just go such a long way. I mean, they bring puppies to college campuses during finals for a reason, like it just lowers people's stress level. And I think not just the students would really benefit from this, I think that we have to really look at our staff too, like, you know, I appreciate anyone who comes up and says, thank you so much to school committee members, I totally agree. But we all know, like, our staff, they're still coming out of a few really stressful years. And I can't imagine what it would be like just to have a dog in the building, like even if somebody's just having a bummer day, and they can go in and like sit on the floor for five minutes with a dog, and I just, I think it could be really, really neat and really valuable, and it's creative, and it's the kind of thinking that I think makes everybody really excited. So I just, from the perspective of a parent, and I work with the PTO, like, we're super excited about Lisa's creativity and just wanted to support the project. Thank you.
I think everybody else works for us. So I think we are good with community comment.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Next item on the agenda is superintendent's report, I'll pass that on to Mr. Pocazza.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee, members of the public, thank you. I will be, now I promise this every time, I will be exceedingly brief in my report, or at least for what I'm speaking towards. For those of you who are playing along at home, the superintendent's report is posted on board docs. Next slide, please. Items in this report will include the traditional personnel, which you was also already included in your packet, as well as an enrollment update, and a brief equity audit, of which most of members here took part of in terms of most recent steps, and then I will turn it over to Ms. Fontaine for the teaching and learning aspect up. Next slide, please. So we have four leaves of absence, two resignations, and one, excuse me, two appointments, one of a teaching assistant and one of a head girls tennis coach in terms of resignations. As always, we thank people for their service to the district. And we, we are working with Ms. Charlene Briggs, our HR coordinator, to fill these positions, as well as members of our bargaining unit. Again, with resignations at this time of the school year, the positions that are posted are one-year onlys up into this school year, and I can report that even as one-year onlys so far this academic year, we are getting good responses in terms of applicants. So I'm pleased to, again, welcome Ms. Christine Egan is one of those applicants who's going to be a teaching assistant, or currently is a teaching assistant at Mattoonik Elementary. Next slide, please. So here is the traditional updated since the last, since the last meeting, our enrollment tracker for each school. For those who don't remember or don't have it in front of them, I can also, I'll start to include this in future updates. Mattoonik Elementary has increased by one, Peace Dale increased by one, West Kingston has gone down by two, Broad Rock Middle School down by one, and South Kingstown High School down by three. So for a grand total, so far, we were at two twenty or two thousand two hundred and twenty last report, and so we are now at two thousand two hundred and sixteen. Next slide, please. So here we have the requested withdrawal and enrollment snapshot. Again, this is being done based off of the rationale that is being placed in terms of withdrawals that is being given since July one in terms of the codes that were provided, and that these are the codes that are in there. What you will notice or draw attention to is that on the homeschooling notes that in most cases, the homeschool requests that are before you are not new, when they are new, they will, or if they are coming out of the current enrollment, or if they are not reenrollments from the previous year, they will show up on this report. So while you just approved a plethora of homeschool requests, many of those would not be included on this sheet. One, because they were not approved yet, and two, because they may have been continuations or that they homeschooled last year, and so as such, are not, were never in the two thousand two hundred and twenty total from last meeting. And I'll pause a moment, see if there's any comments or questions regarding enrollment.
Just a question, the
Yes.
The students who went to public schools in Rhode Island, particularly like high school. I mean, we could guess that some of those ninth graders might have gone to CTE programs, but we don't, these could have been kids who moved, it could have been kids who went to CTE programs, we're not, we don't distinguish that.
Yeah, we're gonna disaggregate that from here, so that once it was posted already in terms of not having a column for CTE, I realized, whoop, those could be both, and so we'll disaggregate those moving forward. Okay, next slide, please. In terms of the equity audit update, as last discussed, and at last meeting, we had two members of the equity audit team come in, Dr. Stanley Rabinowitz, who takes care of the metrics, as, as well as the chief organizer, Mandy from West Wind. We had actually at that, Mandy Bothar, excuse me, we had all seven school committee members, originally it was four when we first did our update or see a check of availability, and then it became all seven of you, so my, my, my thanks for, to you all for adjusting your schedules. Unfortunately, some folks fell under the weather, I did inquire, and they are open and can, we can set up virtual half-hour meetings, so that every member of the committee is granted the same amount of time. Again, for members of the public, the equity audit folks came on in town just to get a get-to-know-you, and I've included their two slides that they provided for us. Really to get to know the certain members of the community that they would be interacting with initially right away, and that would be our district administrators, our school principals, and as well as our, the school committee. They will be coming back, and Ms. Bothars and I will be meeting, or we're attempting to meet this week, so that we can have a standing bi-weekly meeting, so that we can get things up and running and underway. I still have yet to receive a data sharing agreement, however, I am encouraged that based off of the things that we talked about in that meeting, the type of data that they were looking at in term, and as is mentioned here, in terms of data desegregation, is things that are fairly similar to what we report on a, on a high-level state reporting, where there are no student ID numbers attached to those reports, but it is disaggregated by the subgroups. And so, again, I'm encouraged, but again, I do not have a data sharing agreement that has been reviewed by council as of yet.
Michael, can I just? I, I just want to say thank you to the administration and to West Wind for inviting us to for the school committee to be a part of the process in the beginning. I think people have different lenses, and it's very helpful for the consultant to hear from all facets, and I think they did a great job, and so thank you, Michael, thank West Wind. I was very encouraged to meet the, the two principals that, that were there on Friday, and I have every confidence that this is gonna be a great audit, it's overdue, and I'm so happy we're doing it now, so thank you.
Thank you, I was remiss in that I did leave two individuals out that I think are key, and that we made sure our key stakeholders, in order to hear from our key stakeholders, once focus groups and surveys go out, and that is our ELL, MLL coordinator, as well as our community outreach coordinator. We made sure that they were part and had, each had half-hour interviews as well, to make sure that our outreach to the community is varied, is differentiated, and that all groups of the community are represented, and so they were also included in addition to those parties that I had mentioned previously. Okay, next slide, please. And as promised, up next is our teaching and learning. I'm gonna take this one, because it was actually one of the first agenda items that I was able to bring forward in my very recent tenure here, however, now you get to hear it straight from the, straight from the source. But I will remind the committee that the last time this was brought up, not too long ago, this summer, we had a little bit of the history in terms of the ask, in terms of Ms. Fontaine's efforts, as well as those coordinated efforts with Principal McNeese here. And so what I hope you get from tonight, or what Ms. Fontaine's here is to give you the firsthand experience of the trainings that have been gone through, the research from someone who is an expert in the the, the standards and the counseling program here at Broad Rock Middle School. I will say that in terms of, in terms of what's next, the thinking is, is that after this presentation, you will have as much up-to-date information as we can, I've also included in your packets sample policies that Ms. Fontaine has put together, as well as a surrounding districts policy of Exeter West Greenwich, of which after it is modeled for, and that there's still that idea in terms of, as we go through this process, to continue with community outreach and deal with both the enthusiasm, and if there are any any concerns moving forward that we would like to address, as well as then solicit questions on a firsthand, from the committee and from the community moving forward. So without further ado, it is my pleasure to welcome up to the podium, Mr. Fontaine, to talk about Mr. Bentley.
Good evening, I'm Lisa Fontaine, for those of you who don't know me, I have a longstanding history in South Kingstown, and I'm really excited about this proposal. I was hired back in 2001 and was in special education for many years, and I moved into school counseling in 2017. And with my work in school counseling, I have had a lot of experience and exposure to the national and state-level programs that are offering therapy dogs in their systems, and the response has been overwhelmingly positive with the impact on the school community. So I'm really excited to invite a special member to our school community to, in hopes to support a positive climate and culture at Broad Rock. If we can go to the next slide, please. So just to clarify some of the definitions, so we have a non-assistive dog that is just a family pet, right? And then there are service dogs, and a lot of folks confuse service dogs with a therapy or compassion dog. Compassion dogs are meant to service a wide variety of people and environments, and a service dog often will have a tag that says, please do not pet me. Bentley wears a tag that says, please pet me. So it is meant to support the whole school and the existing curriculum for our school counseling program. Next slide, please. That is just a visual sort of for the differences in the therapy animal and what dogs can do, what things, it's sort of redundant from the last slide, so I apologize. We can move to the next slide, please. We really want Bentley to provide a vital and emotional support and comforting presence in our building. A lot of our school students struggle with attendance, they struggle with engagement, and I have spoken to at least four other school counselors who are doing this around the state, and they said the just the interactions are almost miraculous on a daily basis for these students. Dogs provide just unconditional acceptance and love, and we want our students to feel that every day. Next slide, please. The school therapy dog programs align with the American School Counselor Association standards, so that's the national standards of which our school counselors base their standards on in the state. I've done a lot of work with the Rhode Island Department of Ed, I'm actually helping to rewrite the Rhode Island frameworks for school counselors in the state. And so just so you know that this aligns with our national organization. Next slide, please. Therapy dogs benefit students in so many ways, and I've highlighted, I know you all have a copy of this, the emotional well-being, social interactions, cognitive skills, behavior, learning, which is our highlight. We want students to attend school, we want them to feel supported, we want them to be happy here, but we also want them to engage in the learning process. And stress is where I spend ninety percent of my conversations in school, either with staff or with students. or with students or parents. Um, the stress and anxiety level of our world is at a heightened um space right now, and I think that therapy program, a therapy dog in a school program will help to alleviate some of that. That's the hope. Next slide, please. We want to build a culture where our kids are feeling like they can come to school every day without fear, anxiety, or stress, and we want them to learn. Next slide, please. There is a lot of research to support this. I've included a few of the highlighted research um, articles that I found. If you clicked on um, anything in Rhode Island news recently, you can find therapy dogs across the state supporting students. Um, this article was uh, published in January of two thousand and twenty-three, and it just highlights how schools are using therapy animals to boost mental health, and that's my goal. Next slide, please. So Bentley, Bentley is a two-year-old King Charles Cavalier. He is sweet, sweet, sweet puppy. We thought you were gonna be like, here's Bentley. I, I wish I had brought him now. I should have. Right? I'm trying to follow the rules, but I've brought a photo. He is a dream. I've had two Cavaliers in the past. This is my third, and they are just really gentle, gentle creatures. Um, and so um, he's two and a half years, almost two. Um, he has completed his training. Um, we did get a certification in April of two thousand and twenty-four, and we're continuing the training to be a good citizen canine. Um, that's our goal. He has had lots of, lots of experiences. I have taken out an additional policy on my home for an umbrella policy for an additional million dollars, as was advised by um, ASCA and RISC. Um, I would provide all up to date vaccination in all grooming needs, clearly. Um, next slide, please. Turn rule. Oh, there we are. So Bentley has had the experience um, and the pleasure of working at the Johnny Cake Center over the last year. So I started the journey with the elementary students and went to about four sessions with them, and then I transitioned to the middle school program. That was an after-school JEMs girl program that I helped to coordinate with Kate Brewster, Meg McGuire, um, Mrs. Haberlin, and it was a huge success for our students. They felt very, very connected and a huge success for Bentley. Um, in the elementary program, I will tell you, the first day I walked in, I modeled with a woman who was already there with a dog, and so she was very welcoming to say, please come in. Let me show you what I do. We learned from her, and the first student that approached me said, I have a lot of anxiety around dogs. And I was like, okay. So how are we going to work through this? And we did. So week one, he was very um, timid, and he watched from afar in the room. Week two, we got a little closer. Week three, who was in the circle of the group, and week four, he was walking Bentley with a leash. So it was a gentle, you know, um, progression, and that's what our goal was. Um, I didn't expect that week one for a kid to come right up to me and say, I don't really like dogs. And I was like, okay. Let's see how we can work through this. So I think that, you know, we want students to feel comfortable, but they have to feel safe and supported in that. Um, and that is one of the pieces of the journey. A couple of our students in the JEMs program had very, very difficult years. Um, and I can't tell you how many times on Monday morning they were like, is Bentley coming on Friday to JEMs? Because that's all they care about. And it's not all they care about, but for them, it was a beautiful highlight. Um, and it was really truly amazing to watch. Bentley comes to my brother's business on Saturday mornings, and I will tell you, on Saturday mornings, a lot of people don't come into the store for business. They come in to see the dog. I've had people literally crawl on the floor and spend time, and I'm talking adults, children, grandparents, what have you. Um, Bentley has a lot, a lot of exposure, and I just put a few um, highlights. Bolin alleys, if you've ever been in a bowling alley, it's loud environment, there's screaming and yelling and unexpected things, and he's there as a calming presence, and he doesn't react. So I want you to know his personality is very gentle and sweet. Um, any community event I go to, I take the dog. So he does wear a vest when he's working, and it says, therapy dog, please pet me. Uh, next slide, please. Every workplace should have an emergency puppy in case you're having a bad day. Many, many of the staff have approached me. They know the journey I've been on with the dog, and they, as much as the students want this. Um, I will tell you, I do know a lot of the schools in the state. I'm just going to highlight a couple. Um, Alan Shawn Feinstein has been doing this, Lincoln Middle School, High School, Smithfield, Situate, Rhode Island School for the Deaf had a dog. That person just got placed in another district, so she's not bringing the dog there yet, and Exeter West Greenwich. Um, next slide, please. So if you have low energy or you're depressed, you can try B twelve, but some of us recommend K nine. Next slide. Just a little motion detector or any motion detector. And the next slide. So I provided a lot of resources in the binder, and I know that you attached the policy. Um, and so if you have any questions, um, I have done a lot of work. I've done a lot of research. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any questions. I could say in closing, um, we are all here for the same goal. We want our kids to attend school. We want them to be safe and happy and engaged in learning. So if we can help with that, I think this is a positive, creative way to do that. So, thank you. Questions?
Thank you for this. This is wonderful. Um, question about the policy um, that you've put together. I'm assuming you basically based that on existing
Yes.
Policies elsewhere, and it's come to the policy subcommittee, or it is coming to the policy subcommittee?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
So um, I have a procedural question. So we're just here to hear the presentation tonight. Are we to give feedback on this policy, or should that be held till later?
No, I included that to to highlight the above and beyond work that Mrs. Fontaine has gone through, in addition to all of the training, in addition to the things that were highlighted there. She's gone not o- not only with the training and the thoughtfulness of putting this together, but also in terms of, okay, how do we, how do districts do this? And so some of that, some of that pre-work that would then go to the policy subcommittee. Um, I wanted to present that work to you, both in terms of a possible policy that she had drafted, as well as a comparable community.
So
So
First of all, I I do want to thank you. I think this is fabulous. Um, and exciting and and what a joy for our school community to have a program like this. I think that's great. Um, so I I I just got some comments and and things I want to work out with the policy. So that's not now. We can do that later.
So my recommendation would be that if there were comments about that draft policy, that you could, you know, give those to me, and I will be and or to the polit- and then we'll bring it up at the policy subcommittee. We'll put it on the agenda and look to address those.
Sure, and it's just more clarification than anything, but that's it. I just want to know what the best way to address that. And again, thank you, because I think this is fabulous.
Thank you.
I would also suggest that we go review those uh, the therapy dog policy and requirement that this term would have as well.
So that would be happening as well. And then we would, all of the things that we had done previously when we ran this by the trust, uh, which included review by local, once policies were all crafted, we would go through all those policies and procedures and certifications once again, should it be.
I did share this with the school nurse, and we've had lengthy discussions. She's in support of it. Um, we have a plan for any students with allergies and or um, you know, alternative fears, whatnot. So know that in the policy, there's considerations for all of those.
I just want to add um, appreciation for you bringing this forward, and because you're really doing this as volunteer with your own personal dog. So that's very much appreciated that you're going above and beyond. And I know it's not just our own personal experience with dogs, but there's a tremendous body of research about the effect that animal positive effect both physical and mental health on uh, on people and especially on kids. And uh, I think it would make, and we, that's why we see the police have them, courts have them, you're seeing them in prisons, and it's because hospitals. Um, and uh, I think it would make a a huge difference for the schools, and there's I could talk to about more resources if you, if you need them about those um, positive benefits. But I appreciate you bringing it forward because I think it would be great for the kids in school to have a place like this to go.
Thank you.
I know a girl that knows Bentley.
I know you do. Lots of girls know Bentley.
Yeah, so I just want to say thank you too for the hard work to implement this into the school where all of our students have the opportunity to have somebody to cut a lap up, because I know my girl, since we've lost our dog. Um, every time she came from JEMs, that's all she she had to talk about. Nothing else that happened, just Bentley.
So, that means a lot. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, and thank you, Principal McNeese, and everybody else with the, who came to to support uh, to support this initiative and Mrs. Fontaine. And so with that, oh, a little over a half hour. Whoa, no, under a half hour, that would conclude my report.
Just, um.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the superintendent report.
Our favor.
Aye.
That must pass us. We'd like to take this opportunity to open up community comments. If uh, Mr. Beasley would like to step to the podium.
Unless you want to wait till eleven o'clock. Sorry, couldn't help myself.
Not two nights in a row. Hi, uh, good evening. Um, so some really good news. I heard some really good news last night um, at the town council meeting regarding the availability of federal funding um, for green technology, green energy uh, that you may be putting into the new high school. So federal um, the Biden bill that passed, uh, I think was in two thousand and twenty-two were to promote green uh, technology and um net zero and all that stuff uh, is really good. So if the geothermal well is successful, and you decide to go that route, uh, the the lady that was, who spoke last night said that uh, you can get a lot of money back from the federal government to uh, cover a a bunch of that uh, expenses to bring that into your, into your school or solar or a- any type of um green technology. But the part that really interested me last night was when she started talking about electric buses. So she showed a slide where uh, the average cost of an electric school bus right now is about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But the federal government um, has two different, there are two different um piles of money that's avail- that are available to offset the cost of of an electric school bus. So when when you subtract the two um, it brought the, the cost of the bus at about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So if you remember, when I was up there a while back, and I talked about suggesting that you get into the, in the bus, the bus business. Uh, to me, it's even more of a no-brainer now. So because let's say you you decided to get into the bus business. If you could get the buses for that amount of money, and then the vans would be cheaper too. So you could probably get twenty buses and ten, ten vans for like four million bucks now. When um Mr. Man, when the town, when the town manager did a, a a cost analysis, they had the cost analysis of, of kind of a iffy cost analysis of what it would cost to 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 do busing. Their estimate was that the cost for the people that you would need, the drivers, the the monitors, uh, the people to maintain the buses would be about three million dollars a year. So if you own the buses and the vans, then your costs go to like three points, some million dollars a year. Instead of the five point eight that you're paying this year and next year, probably it's going to be more in the and what I'm thinking is once so this is a mandated thing uh in this, in the country, that by some point in time they want transportation as much as possible to be converted over to um other, other forms that other than gasoline and diesel. So when companies like Ocean State Transit decide to go, that they have to start buying electric buses. They're going to pass that cost onto you. Now, the other thing is, I'm not sure a private company buying those buses, if they're going to get the same maybe they don't get the same deal as you would for a school district. That I don't know. But anyway. Um, I really think you should think about it, because if you could if, if you could get into the bus business for four million dollars in capital and three million dollars a year. Well, once you, once you buy your buses and your vans, and they're electric, the maintenance costs are going to be very low. They're going to be all new buses, new vans. So if you, if you can do it for three some million dollars a year instead of six, you save three million dollars, and that three million dollars would cover fifty percent of the cost to what the taxpayers are going to pay to to build that new high school. That three million dollars, if you could subtract it out of your budget, would cover fifty percent of the cost that it's going to cost the taxpayers each year to build that high school.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda is school committee business. Um, a discussion on South Kingston High School CTE program.
Good evening. Slide deck. Believe it is also online. Go over to start anyway. Right, so I I always kind of lead with like an overview of things we do at the high school. So um, next slide, Doug. Okay, so this is just a review of the programs that we currently have. Um, Allied Health Certified Nursing Assistant or Emergency Medical Technician, Construction Technology, Prodigy the Way Biomedical, Prodigy the Way Computer Science, Studio Art, Craft and Fine Artist Designer or Educator. Um, on the next slide, we also have some career exploration courses that we're currently running at the high school. Um, Pharmacy Tech is in its second year, Personal Trainer. Uh, it's at least second year, might be third. I'm I'm sorry, I I can't remember if it was two or three there. Um, and firefighting, that is new this year. It's a partnership with the um, Union Fire District and um, a University of Rhode Island Education Course that is also new this year. What we're finding is that um, career exploration courses are something we can add in um, without the uh, to sort of test to see what where student interest is. Um, on the next slide, please. This is an overview of our grant funding. Um, almost the entire um, CT program is funded by grants. Um, so you have there the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, and so far in twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, Perkins, you'll see is lower than the other two years. That's because we haven't had the rollover yet. That usually happens in the fall. So this is the initial amount that we received, which is um, nearly sixty-eight thousand dollars. We're in the process of spending that. Um, we'll get some more money based on rollover. um nearly sixty-eight thousand dollars. We're in the process of spending that. Um, we'll get some more money based on rollover. Last year it was late fall. Um, we have special programs um that pays for um our HOSA. Um, the kids to go to the HOSA conference and that's tied to our biomedical. Um, and Perkins Reserve, um, that is um, that that is money that um why am I drawing a blank on this one? Oh, that is a special education CTE grant. So essentially we have um, uh, it pays for two stipends for um Adam Shaw and Christine Rathman. So a um construction tech teacher and a um special educator to go um work together. Um, Christine was chosen because she has seven students on her caseload that are enrolled in the construction tech CTE program. So this grant pays for them to go to that. The Perkins um secondary set aside was a grant that was written to pay for schooling for um a new CTE teacher. So um they, that is so that they can come out of industry and and um and get a their certificate. Um, so they get their um initial certificate, but this is so that they have the coursework to get a professional one. So after their initial three years. So that's also good. We are waiting on state categorical money, which is coming out later this month. So that will only be for four programs. You have to be high wage, high growth um for that part. And then, like I said, we we also should be getting some Perkins rollover. So that's the money that we have this year. And as you can see, um, it's substantial amount of money that helps to helps to fund. So this is not coming out of local funds to pay for these. All right. So on the next slide, um, there's some some data that I just wanted to share with you. So this is the um, what we're looking at students, percentage of students from each cohort that are enrolled in CTEs. So you can see that it's ranging anywhere from almost forty-seven percent to down to thirty-one percent. Um, but it's still a good chunk of our classes that that are involved in that. Next slide, please. Um, and then this is CTE representation continued. Uh, we have the um Allied Health uh down through Studio Art and it's showing you how many students in our school are enrolled in these CTEs right now. And then it shows you out of all of the CTE students, what percentage um of the students are enrolled in in each CTE program. So that kind of gives you an idea there. Um, what maybe not. And just because one's lower doesn't mean that it's that it's not popular. It's just that um it's su- some students might be drawn to one over the other for a variety of different reasons. And then on the last slide are just some important notes there. Um, our new building will improve our CTE spaces because um, these programs did not exist as CTE programs when our building was built. And so we're definitely keeping that in mind. But also keeping in mind flexibility too, because the CTE programs we have today, twenty years from now, they might not be the CTE programs that make the most sense. So flexibility in the building, but also um creating spaces. So these programs can be more efficient. Um, the, we have a revamped computer science CTE program um that offers kids the option of going um into cyber um as part of the program as opposed to an elective. So that was a big change this year, bringing, as I mentioned, bringing firefighting and pharmacy tech in as um career exploration courses, but um they also went into the umbrella of Allied Health. Um, CTE participation um is 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 a very important part to our um our goal of seventy-five percent of students. Um, ta- taking college or getting earning college or career credit. So that's really important to us. Um, that's one of our school improvement goals and um, we did achieve that with the class of twenty twenty-five. We have some work to do with the class of twenty twenty-six, but um, it keeps us focused on 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 getting kids into that place and we think we can, we can achieve that for them. Um, I I mentioned about the grants. Uh, we do have on the Broad Rock students coming to our high school on October seventh and October eighth. So we used to do that in the um in the spring. We decided to move it into the fall so that they um as part of that uh like it or not, the process of choosing where you're going to go to high school. So having them come instead of and like an orientation, we already have an orientation um that we do in the summertime. This is more of a um come to get to know our school. So half the students will be coming on the seventh, half coming on the eighth. Um, our showcase night is November seventh, six to eight P M. That's um, we don't call it open house because open house is the thing that we just had last week, which is where um the currents, uh, parents um and guardians come to see what our teachers are offering. So it gets, it got confusing to have them be the same name. So that's why we call it showcase night. But um you would see some other schools potentially calling it open house. So there is no set time they have to come. It's just it's open and that's really to learn about our school. That was a very successful night last year. And um we also have um, uh, you know, student and staff visits to to Broad Rock as well um to highlight the things we're doing. So that's the general overview.
Um, so thank you. This is um wonderful work that you and and the staff was doing at the high school. Um, so kudos to to you and the students. Um, the career exploration classes, do you see any of those becoming new CTE programs in the future?
So I don't know. It's it's a good question. Um, I know that um we're working with state to have the pharmacy tech and the um uh, I'm sorry, the firefighting as part of Allied Health. So instead of um, instead of creating a new CTE program, kind of um folding it under it. So you're in the program and you're you're taking a variety of things. So maybe you're picking up two certificates instead of one certificate. So that seems to be the best way there. And then you don't have to have a new program. Education, I don't know. Um, this will be the first year we're running it. We're going to run it in the second semester. It's going to be interesting to see what kind of um input we have there. Um, U R I has told us that they would be willing to offer more courses to us. Um, if if the student interest in taking more of those courses, and as far as the personal trainer is concerned, um, that really wouldn't be a CTE, but it is, it is a nice um uh, certificate that students can pick up um at no cost to them um through the high school. Yeah, yep.
So Chip, on um the cohort, percentage of cohort in CTE, um out of those percentages, do we have any numbers? And you don't have to supply them now, but in the future, maybe um as far as uh percentage of kids, uh, not necessarily percentage of kids, but number of kids who might be coming from other districts to come in to in be part of these cohorts.
So right now we have five students from from other districts that are that are um at South Kingston High School.
CTE they may be part of? Or is that, you don't have to answer that. It's too identifiable.
I that that's sort of why I didn't include that. Yes, I was afraid that it would be.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah.
Small N there. Yeah.
Yeah, no, I I it's a what you guys are offering. And um, I know Penny, Ms. Bush has taken over um a lot of the kind of leading it up. She's done a phenomenal job. Um, and you and and Ms. Christina supporting it along the way has been amazing to watch it grow. Um been kind of alongside you watching the journey and it's been very impressive to watch it grow, especially when I get an opportunity, anybody gets an opportunity at the end of the culmination of uh students, um, when they're at the senior project, it's really cool to see the kids who really embrace this and where they're going. So I appreciate um you sharing, especially right out of the gate now. Um, and then if we, you know, just kind of keeping that front and center that um, I don't know how many times I hear that we should offer shop. And it's like, well, we have a whole construction CTE program around it. So um, so I love that we just can keep um, kind of announcing it over and over again as often as as possible. Um, I do have a clarification question for you. The difference between biomedical and the allied health programs, what is the difference between those? If you don't mind, like, yeah, broad.
Yep, that that's a great question. So the biomedical um is really focused on um almost like you, you want to specifically go into the uh like a medical career. Um, it's a lot of um and it definitely has a forensics component to it, but it's it's more focused on like, I want to, I want I want to go into a medical career period, just like that umbrella. Um, biotechnology could be something that that would fall under that umbrella too. Whereas the um allied health is much more specific, like CNA certificate, EMT uh certificate, um pharmacy tech certificate. So it's very it's it's much more like um, pick your sip, pick your cert. The biomedical, I think, is 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 more for for a broad um audience.
Uh, just one clarification, the showcase night, is that open to the public and other communities or is that?
Absolutely. Yep. So that's our night. Yeah, thank you. That that's our night where um we want people to come. Um, and it's 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 usually a really good night. So to get to come and see our building tours, um, meet people that work at the high school, um, read T-shirts, like that type of thing. So it's it's a good night.
It'd be a good night to also start to show um what South Kingston High School is going to look like.
Yes, um, and we and they were kind enough to, Chris and Phil were kind enough to come last year and I haven't asked them yet, but uh, I I that is definitely on the uh the docket to get done. Yeah. Yep. But a good reminder. Yep. Yeah, yeah.
Again, great, great things going on at the high school now and 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 great things still to come to to build off of. And I know that we've had um a request for CTE enrollment in terms of the enrollment report and being unable to disaggregate that, I wanted to make sure and ask uh Dr. McGar to be here in order to talk about that enrollment on a on a systemic, on a systemic level. So um you know, the fact that in many cases it is not drawing from other communities yet is definitely a a yet, but more importantly, the this through the statistics that I think you see here is that it's serving our students who are here with us now and engaging with them. And um like to thank both you and Principal McNeese for moving this, you know, making that iterative iterative change to starting this process earlier. And I think that, you know, we're we're going to keep on showing the great things that are going on. So thank you for presenting.
Yeah, welcome. Hey, thank you, everybody. Great night.
Thank you, Mr. Gare. Um, moving on to the next item on the agenda would be the uh homeschool operations.
So in the homeschool operations, um essentially uh in what you had in your packet and was posted on board docs, um essentially what we would what we've noticed in our in our brief tenure here is uh what's surprising is that we do not have a digital workflow for our homeschool requests. Um, this makes collecting the data, um, some reporting out on making sure that we have all of the information necessary um to make sure that we can communicate effectively uh with our homeschool community, family and students. Um, so what you have or the reason that I'd asked for to put this on as a discussion item was because, again, Mr. Seager and I have been here for uh a second and want to make sure that in turn that there's not aspects of the community uh that in terms of initiating uh this workflow or making this available, we want to make sure that this is something that for those of you who are part of this community now or have been part of it for a longer period of time, um can can best advise if there's something that we're missing. Again, what we are not, we are what we are not saying is that it would be a digital only or that we are changing. What we are doing is is we are adding on. So in terms of the paper-based uh in terms of certified letters that we typically get um currently under this po- under uh, under this uh change right now, we have no modifications to policy. It would just be putting forward uh a a Google form and another avenue by which uh we can get that homeschool information, get those requests and get them before you uh in a much more timely manner and then follow up as needed. Um, both in terms of getting you the information regarding those plans of to approve or to request more information. And conversely, it also allows us to have a database of in one central place that's being generated by the users rather than us. We're skipping a step in our workflow so that at the end of year reports that are needed in terms of attendance, in terms of um, also workflows involving special education, special education services. Um, we are suggesting making this change. And then I think the other big piece is that um from what I know about this community and I know about this committee is that we also want to know the why. So if there are, if there are folks and who are interested in telling us the why, especially if they're leaving, um, we've modeled the form other after other districts that says, is this about a social concern? Is this about an academic concern? And if so, would you like to speak to an administrator? And so getting that feedback or at the very least soliciting that feedback because we are interested in 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 our community and our students' experiences, whether they're staying with us or leaving. Uh, this would be an avenue for us to do that. Not required by any means. We still, again, are not changing policy, but would like to um bring our homeschool request, at least offer the option of the uh twenty-first century Google form and allow us to improve our internal operations. Uh, and uh within all aspects, whether that be, again, reporting, special ed, attendance, um, registering, registration, residency, um, all of those things would help to streamline those internal processes that have to be done. And so, again, looking for any feedback um in terms of operations or things that any blind spots that we might have in this proposed uh revision or addition to our current operations.
So I'm very concerned about follow-up. And I've heard anecdotally of people that put in for homeschool and there's no follow-up on the district side. And then we kind of lose track. And that's not good for students. It's not good for families. We 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 should know where the students are in our district. You know, and and so I think it needs to be an annual thing where they come to us and let us know, yes, they are still continuing to be homeschool. Um, and I can have and I I think I've shared my concerns with other people and and I did with Bob and Alexis. Um, and I and I would be happy to do that with you, Michael, that why this is so concerning to me. Um, but I think it comes down to safety and following up on where students are and and just to check in annually, yes, we're still homeschooling and and um, but that that piece has not been there and we need to do better. So I'm hoping that that can be an integral part of this.
Uh, absolutely. And and as part of the emphasis behind this, uh, in terms of that that those requests going in, generating, being, having them timestamped, having, having us get notified immediately when they come in. And it's not, it's a, it's got a dignity, digital signature to it. It's got other forms that we can reach out. We can continue to reach out by phone, by by mail. Um, but we now could include now email, following up as well as putting in reminders. So it basically in terms of this is a step to get there. Now, what we would be doing is is we would be taking the existing process and integrating it into there, but that would be done on on our level. So it is all in all, it is to improve upon tho- those concerns and centralize it so that it is happening. And regardless of whether it's a piece of mail and who, which office it went to. Um, historically, it's that it's now being tracked in one place and each office would then take responsibility depending upon if certain aspects are selected. So for example, does your child currently receive special education services? Okay, that that needs to require an immediate follow-up if it's checked off as as yes, one, in terms of do we need to off, are we offering services that are needed? And if not, what are the, what are the pieces that uh need to happen potentially with a student and that who's exiting an I E P then? Um, that's just one, that's just one workflow um that I that we hope to streamline or make, bring in-house and do a better job of.
I have a couple of questions. So I just want to make sure I understood correctly. So that those, some of the additional questions that are asked on this form about, you know, why you might be leaving or if there's an issue, those are, we're not currently asking those on the paper form. Is that right? Okay. And then on the, there are questions about curriculum and plans that you can type in or you can refer to a website, but is there a way to upload a document? Like if I have a paper document, can I somehow, or is that a requirement to give you something or can I just say, this is the name of the book we're using?
Yep. So under current law, it is not a requirement. We can, we can ask and we can look to assist additionally. Um, in terms of our our homeschool community, they are entitled to textbooks that we publicly offer if they are so inclined or if they choose to do that. So having that information about the curriculum being used um also helps us, you know, order and plan if that, if it's something that's being used or being requested from the district, we also have that in the center, in one central location and can track that on a on each family's base, on each student's basis. And um so that that's why that question is is asked.
And then on the, there's a list of our policies. Are it looks like, are those links to the policies on our?
Uh, the the links are 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 to Rhode Island general laws. The uh, I believe, yep, Rhode Island general laws in terms of the subjects that must be covered, uh, the amount of attendance. So those are general links because then at the, at the end of which we would follow up, there is a a digital attestation, which is essentially what we're receiving when we receive it in the form of a a homeschool request signed on a letter. Thank you. But in terms of if there were, you know, we can take a look in But in terms of if there were, you know, we can take a look in um because we now have the ability to upload documents. That's definitely something that we can take a look at in revising that form to say if you have any related documents, here's a section in in lieu of typing into this box, if you would like to include any information on these questions, we we can see if that
I don't know enough about it to know if that's something that's gonna be asked for, but it seems like.
Current, we can, we can ask. Again, to some extent, we can ask to the to the degree that it must be provided is it it is a whole other. So, thank you.
Hey, moving on to facilities update.
Hello, everybody. Um, so seven topics I'm gonna go over. So I'm gonna go on each one and then just I'll stop after each one. If you have any questions, uh feel free to ask. So I'm gonna start with um an update on safety measures that we've been taking at the maintenance department. Um, the first one is in 2019, the town of S K approved a massive radio tower project for the whole town. Um, and working with the fire alarm superintendent, our superintendent, myself, um, we've been working for a couple of years now on getting new radio systems to tie into the police and fire system in the schools. The radio technology we currently have that all the school users are very old, a lot of them are broken over the years and the frequency they're on are outdated. This new pro, the new radios we have incoming uh will be clear. We've been testing them. It sounds like you're on a cell phone rather than a staticky radio. We won't have interference between schools anymore. Currently, Broad Rock can pick up Peace Dale's signal. So if someone calls for the nurse, you might get confused or if someone's on the playground, they'll get playground calls and um they interfere with each other. Uh, another but the biggest reason we went with this program to tie in with the town was because every radio system we have will instantly be able to call police, fire, EMS. It'll send out a townwide signal. So good example of Broad Rock. If a student was out in the field and said they broke their leg during a gym class or something, the radio would have instant communication district wide, it would go right to police, fire, EMS, so they could send a rescue. And again, all their scenarios. So we did purchase those and they are on their way for, and those will, so all the old ones we will take out of service and each school have its own frequency to use. Uh, our capital project, the cameras district wide uh has begun. We've received most of the cameras. Working with Doug Snow, our director of technology, myself um on the final placement of the cameras with our vendor, walk through to the sites and then we'll begin the fiber line installation to the sites where each camera will be mounted. Uh, our current Mar- Maraki cameras that we use are mainly only high school right now, and this project will give us cameras district wide at all the buildings. Uh, this allows us to see real time what's happening in the buildings, outside of the buildings. And actually today, we use the camera. We heard a rumor that someone might have been going in one of the schools on the weekend who had a had a badge and didn't let anybody know. Just a rumor. In two minutes on the phone with someone asking me, hey, check the cameras. Within two minutes, the system's so advanced, I could pull up all the cameras, say boom, 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 do a search and could see whole high school building uh in real in search the hours, the exact location. I could search the whole building and have it right up on one big screen. So the technology compared to what we used to have, which was camera system that only fed back to the maintenance office and you'd have to be sitting at a big TV to see what was happening is it's like years ahead. And the administrators can have access, like the principals, myself, Doug Snow, um if there was ever an emergency situation. Uh, we've also worked on updating our door access software and monitoring software for the door access, and we did install six new door swipes this summer. We performed our annual fire marshal inspection uh to make sure that every building is up to code. We go through every room, every door, every area of every building and did any repairs or deficiencies that the fire marshal found. Also, we've been working with the staff to keep the buildings safe and in compliance with the fire code. As you guys might have seen, Bear Haven had to close uh their schools for two days. We do a box fan in a window is what they reported that had sparked and set a fire. So we are taking that very seriously and have been working with staff to make sure we have no outside electronics in the building or outside materials that shouldn't be here. Um, probably couldn't see it tonight, but we've also been doing major cutting along Broad Rock Road with the help of the town and my staff to increase visibility and site safety. Not only for cars, but for emergency response, for traffic, for in the winter when we have maybe snow this winter. Um, the whole front of the site, you can actually see out all the way on the Broad Rock Road now from the front door of the building. And around the perimeter too, we trimmed up a lot of areas. Um, and the last one I have for safety is over the summer. And then recently, we've been using the Curtis Corner Middle School to conduct local trainings for police, fire and EMS, just using the building to run safety drills, safety trainings, and they've all been very appreciative, which again, there's ever an emergency, the more trainings their crews have, the better. And they've been very happy to use the building and really appreciative of the schools to give us, give them the access. So that's safety. Anybody have any questions on safety? Yeah.
I'm just wondering, um whatever happened to the second egress into Broad Rocks Middle School? Is that still a project or has something happened to it or what's going on with that?
With with how it's worked out with the busing, we've put that towards the back burner. It has been working well. Um, and with the site updates, um, we have discussed with the police and everything, possibly a smaller widening. But the major, the engineering side of it and all that was put put on hold just due to the busing working properly upfront last year. And again, this year, we had no backups. And we've had no issues with the front entrance with really any uh traffic mitigation.
Just wanna follow up with Carol on that because I remember having a robust discussion about it with it uh with Chief Moynihan. Um, and one of the main concerns was the fact that there was only one in, one out.
Yes.
And um so I'm just wondering if maybe um there, we can can keep it on the back burner right now, right? But have a discussion on how to mitigate that in in case of emergency. Is there another way to access this property? Um, we may not want to publicly announce that. We we that may be something that it's only like police, fire, EMS might know, you know, it
And there is, there is currently. There's two actual possible sites or a access way that could be similar to the high school. We could put a barricade or or something.
Yep.
And I often think that Mat- Matunik has the same kind of only one egress. Um, so that that was a a concern, not just with with this school, but on the larger scale in an emergency, if something were to happen and block that one entrance, how do you get in? So not for discussion here. I think what you're doing is wonderful for keeping all our buildings safe. But we we still want to keep these other things in our mind. So
Great. Great. Okay, I'll move on to utilities. Uh, currently, we are pricing out renewal for our electric rates. Our current contract runs through the end of 2025, but the electric market that we have access to is currently favorable. So we're looking at possibly doing an extension for 25 through 26 or 27, just while we have favorable pricing right now to lock in for budget, budgeting. Uh, we also received good news on the natural gas pricing. Uh, we're currently in the state pool with uh the town of South Kingsdown and about 20 to 25 other municipalities around the state who priced through uh the Department of Energy uh as a group to get the best rates possible. Uh, they priced all over nationally and they um just came back with their pricing for what we will have access to is the school department. And the good news is that it's only going, it's going from sixty-two point sixty-two, sorry, sixty-two cents per therm to sixty-three cents per therm, which is a very small increase overall. And the standard rate right now is actually going to be two cents higher than that. And their bid ended about a month ago and currently the gas markets and the gas futures are skyrocketing. So if they hadn't finished their bid till this month or October, we would have seen a much more inflated rate. So this is a very favorable rate. This is for two years and this is an extension that pretty much everybody in the state is going to be using for the gas utilities. And the last one I have for utilities is we actually just got approval for a huge HVAC upgrade program through Rhode Island Energy. And this is, I said it about a year ago, when we got the lighting project at the high school, this is a once in a lifetime. They are actually fully funding this project for us. Rhode Island Energy had renewable money available. They're looking for saving heating costs for school departments, municipalities. And it'll be uh about eight hundred to thousand to a million dollar project that we will be getting free. Really free, zero cost, on paper, zero, everything. What it'll do is upgrade all our sensors and controls for all of our heating and ventilation and cooling throughout the district. Most of the sensors right now and the devices are twenty to forty years old. So what will happen is all those sensors will be replaced throughout every building of the district. So that's my really, really good news for the day. Yeah. And again, we just again, thank you Rhode Island Energy. It's, we all pay in our bills at home and we pay our monthly with that road that credit, but we really have lucked out twice now compared to typically when we've done projects like this pa- in the past, we they usually cover about thirty to fifty percent of a project and then we pay back over a few years to uh Rhode Island Energy, but this will be fully covered. Any questions on utilities?
Just was, yeah. Was that on our capital um expense? But does that change our capital plans at all? Was that
It does slightly, yeah. So originally we had budgeted, I believe, eighty-three or eighty-seven thousand for a server upgrade because part of it is also to our internal server that controls our HVAC systems. Um, the only cost we'll have associated with is building that server, which our tech department has already done. Um, and that will upgrade our security. That was why we actually approached National Grid two years ago to do this project was it's a security threat currently, you know, if we don't have future proof this system. Um, so with National Grid, you know, thankfully dragging their feet a little bit and the contractor, it's now worked out to originally, the whole program was going to be about a hundred thousand dollar program. And now, after they did a comprehensive search for a whole district, it's about eight hundred thousand to a million. I don't have the signed document yet, but I will come forward with a more robust presentation next month. Okay, so now I'm just gonna go through each building, kind of just tell you guys what we've done um over the summer and currently. And if you guys have any questions about the buildings, please let me know. So at S K High School, we cleared all the debris around the town and I want to thank the town of S K. They went through and cut a lot of the trees for us again to save the district money um with their tree specialist and our uh vendor, Dimeo pushed back all the overgrow and everything. So we do yearly, again, to keep the cars a little further away from each other. That parking lot was designed when cars were a lot smaller. So we try to do everything to mitigate our seventeen, eighteen-year-old students from bumping into each other. Um, we, we refinished, and adults, adults are bad drivers too. Uh, we refinished the gym floors of the high school. Um, we've been working a lot onsite, myself and Dr. McGar um with our specialists for the building project of being ahead of any questions that come up. Our geothermal well going onsite, looking at exactly where it's gonna go, so there's a lot of site work for the upcoming project. Um, a lot of pre-planning, so we know down the road, what will work, what won't work and to make it work as best possible way it can for uh the daily operation of the current high school. And we've done a ton of bathroom work and fixes over the summer at the high school. Any, any school questions? Um, Broad Rock, uh, summer school went very well, as we talked about previously here. And the good thing is now we have all the air conditioners, pre-cutouts for windows, safety, ev- everything we would need to run summer school. Again, if it's gonna be here next year, it's already stored away at my office. We get it turned around in a day and the building will be ready to go for summer school. So we're, we're a really good place for summer school going forward. We also refinished the gym floors here, um cleared the trees like we talked about, uh added two security swipes to this building, installed additional signage for wrong way driving because we still have had some people going the wrong ways and misuse the parking lot. So we have updated our signing signage. Uh, one bathroom has been redone due to a long-term leak. So that was uh, I believe, a lot of it was replaced flooring and the vanity. Our new boiler should be up and running by mid-October. And we are, uh, we had worked with the town. So there's a new staircase out on Broad Rock Field. We did a joint project with the town to get that done. That slope had been deteriorating for many years, became very unsafe. And now there's a very safe staircase right up to the fields. And the last thing is we have incoming roof repairs to create a watertight seal, especially in our second floor. Uh, the roof has a lot of deficiencies from old HVAC units, wear and tear and just New England. Uh, anybody have any, Rob Rock? Okay. Uh, Peace Dale, uh, we have two new door swipes that have been installed. One on the pond side and one on the pre-K uh playground side. We refinished the gym floor there. We had a furniture delivery this summer um that Mr. Rapore had put together. And we also replaced, so we used that to replace a lot of the old furniture that was in that building, but we also went to Curtis Corner again, to try to use what we have and took all the first corner furniture, which had been purchased in the last five to ten years, which is in great shape. That was very lightly used and replaced everything at Peace Dale. So it wasn't some rooms got new or nice furniture. We, working with John, we really wanted to make sure everybody in that building felt like they got some nice new updated furniture. We did have our first playground repair done. A bolt fell off of one of the little climbers and I will happily report that the company was out within two days to put the new bolt in. Because like I've explained to you guys, we are not even allowed to put one bolt in on that because we are not licensed uh playground inspectors or installers. We do have three new HVAC units incoming, uh which were under the S R funds and it should be in about four to five weeks, serving the library computer, former computer room and the music areas downstairs. And this is another building where we have also used funds uh for some really major roof repairs to really uh tighten up the roof and get rid of some deficiencies. That's Peace Dale's update. Uh, Matunik, we had one new door swipe installed. We did team with the S K Police this summer. Um, it's a really small one, but we like to really wherever we can team with the police and they stored all their e-bikes at the school this summer to keep them safe because they were using them down in the Tunic area for safety um this summer. So again, wherever we can, we try to team up with S K P D, Fire, EMS. Uh, we've been working on updating the sandbox on site. Again, old sandboxes. So John Caprally from my office is rebuilding them. And I know what you're all waiting for. It's the playground update. And uh, I don't have the exact date. I will come to in two weeks with it, but um, the third week of October is what I'm seeing like right now for both playgrounds, third and fourth weeks of October. Any questions? Good. West Kingston, oh, yeah. Yeah, no, no. West Kingston, the best school in the district because my daughters go there. Uh, but I treat every school equally. I want to say that to my my bosses and my other bosses that I I treat every school equally. Um, we had one new door swipe installed there uh towards the playground in the building. Again, which is just a huge upgrade for security with that building having the bike path in the back and everything. Um, we we really went through and chose those uh with using with the police and ourselves is where was the best place to add the updated security measures. Same thing at uh West Kingston. We used furniture from Curtis Corner um to really kind of upgrade the summer where we could and get everything we can useful out of Curtis Corner. Again, we don't want to see anything go to waste. Uh, new playground incoming and the parking lot work that uh for the new parking lot is going to be after school ends in June of this coming year. Um, this summer, just in abundance of engineering, trying to move the old fire hydrant in the back and get the right depth of the parking lot. We wanted to give it a robust amount of time for our town engineers and outside companies to bid it out, vet it out and get the most we can for our capital funds. Anybody have any questions on maintenance?
So what's happening at Wakefield School and when can we finally turn it over to the town?
So Wakefield School is still being used, um not used, I should say, in the day-to-day, but we do have voting there. We do have things like that, just to give you the kind of the day-to-day about what the building's being forced. I think that's a robust conversation we have to have again with our our new superintendent, assistant superintendent. But we don't have a turnover date. I can't tell you a turnover date as of this moment.
It, and it's not on you. Um, we just had last December, it was supposed to be given to the town and then it became June. And here we are almost October and we still haven't given it over to the town. And every time, every month that we don't, it's on us to pay the electricity, to pay the the pest contract, the plowing, the maintenance. I just think that I just think that we need to turn it over to the town as soon as possible. So I mean, that's. Again, not on you, maybe that's on us, but I think it, I think that it's time that this become a town asset and not. A school asset because there's no kids in there anymore and voting and things like that can take place there, even if it's a town asset. Yep. So we don't need it, need it as a school building. So I just think that if we need to have this conversation. Official, maybe we need to do that, but what we need to move up this timeline. But other than that. You did a great job. What a busy summer you had with getting all of that done. So thank you.
And my staff, again, I I know I've explained to you guys in the past, but I'm very lucky to have my three maintenance techs and my office and. I'm going to mess the number up. I have twenty-four custodial staff and they they really, they do all the heavy lifts. So we're very lucky.
They're awesome. They they did a lot during a a few short months. So thank you.
I agree with um Carol on every front to handing the keys over to the town. That's the discussion. I think um we, I I I guess you maybe you're hearing from the committee here that maybe. Um, you could have a conversation with Mr. Manny to discuss what that's going to look like because it should have been done almost a year ago and how so. Um, agreed, like the the work you guys did was phenomenal. Um, our Eric did a great job highlighting all the work you guys. Um, did, and I know most of you are humble in what you do and you're not looking to be plastered all over Facebook or social media. Um, so he was, he was uh polite enough not to show faces, but but the actual hard work y'all did.
And I already yelled at the booster club to put my name on Facebook.
There you go. Perfect. Good. Um, one question in lieu of the presentation that we saw last night. Um, around uh green energy, tax credit, things of that nature. I wonder, and this isn't like a directive, but more of a wondering. Um, going forward, um, what it might look like if we did look into like solar on our buildings. Um, or or other, obviously, the um. What we're doing with the new high school is a different animal. Because that's coming from the ground, literally the ground up, um, but maybe retreating um some sort of abuse um and in knowing that we have the tax credits that we can get up. To certain percentage of of rebates and.
And there definitely is initiatives out there. Um, I know it's it's kind of funny how it works in Rhode Island right now, Massachusetts. HVAC is a good one. Heating and cooling, they have huge credits for schools getting heating and cooling. Rhode Island municipalities and schools don't get the credits. Your house, if you buy a mini split system, you get a credit. Schools don't.
So I think that's wonderful with this particular because it's from the federal government so that we can, we can. Explore that route. It says no promises made because as as with every technology that comes out and say, oh, you know, get the. The electric vehicles, but now you, how are you going to repair them? Um, because they do break and they do and charging the whole nine yards. So but again, just putting it on the radar to explore, um, you know, peace sale, Matu- Matunik. You know, they're just wide open spaces. Um, and if we could look at solar and and check the tax credits on those, it would be lovely.
Just the, I I'm sorry, I missed that presentation, but I plan on watch it. Um. I and and I'm certainly not an expert on geothermal energy, but I I wouldn't necessarily rule out existing buildings because. And I know a couple of the the mansions in Newport have been retrofitted with with geothermal. They're over a hundred years old. And they have geothermal energy now. So if those. If if they're really paying a hundred percent of cost of the system like that, we could probably look at existing buildings as well. We just need fields, which we have next to them um in order to put the the wells in, which gets more complicated when you're using the building, but still. Is 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 possible.
And there, what I've seen in the couple of years I've been doing this is there's a lot of uh crossover now where. Roofing and solar go together and you can bundle it all together and actually save districts huge amount of money. And how you determine the contracting, it really can, you can, two birds, one stone kind of. There's definitely a lot of great programs out there right now.
Just have a um. Clarifying question. And it is in regards to. The pavement at West Kingston Elementary. So now I haven't been there for a long time, so. Correct me if I'm wrong. The pavement, I thought we were talking about repairing the pavement to the rear of school where. The playground area is.
The back, the back wall on the back.
Typically just the pocket.
Pretty much from the the back is priority one. So when we're going to put out the the contract, it's going to be a um two-phase contract. Again, with how much capital money we put aside, the problem becomes is with underground piping and how far we have to go down over there. We're trying to, we're trying to redo the whole parking lot, but specifically the main area to focus on the back. And if. Part of that capital planning is we can only get from the back up to the bus, you know, terminal where the buses pull in. That'll be option one, but the main option is to get pricing for the whole parking lot going forward.
And did I hear you say that you had the the pipe in his out of a fire hydrant?
Yes, so there's currently a fire hydrant and when you go to the back of the building and on your left, and I I don't know the full history on it. Um, but there is a fire hydrant right in the back parking lot. It's hasn't been hit in many years, but it has been hit over the years. Um, that's why it's actually, it's actually raised up even higher than code because clouds, parents. People at night going back have hit it. And it's really, it's if you drove straight instead of turned slightly right towards the building, you would go right into the fire hydrant.
Okay, so with all that said, is that the holdup on the project? Because my. Understanding and the reason why I asked for the update today was because I understood that that was going to be done over this past summer.
Partially uh engineering, timing, the ability to get out there with specialists to look at it even closer and get it done right. Part of what happened in my cycle, I will definitely own up to some of this is I didn't want to rush out a contract and say the depth needs to be uh. Six inches when it actually be, has to be an eight and a half inch depth. And then I send the wrong contract out, we get on site and the the whoever wins the bid comes back to us and says. Oh, you actually are going eight and a half and it's another twenty-five percent we're charging. We already won the bid and we're here, so. Just out of an abundance of caution this summer.
And and uh.
And to end the piping and like kind of many reasons of getting our town engineer involved and getting our town, you know, planning department to just get it done. Right, because it is such a big infrastructure move.
Okay, alright, thank you.
And it will not be as complicated as Peace Dale's. Peace Dale's had tons of underground uh piping and drainage and we had to. Ex- expand the drainage at Peace Dale severely. So that's again why that project moved the labyrinth.
Okay.
That conversation's for next month.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks guys.
We have the school.
I want to put the other hat on.
Yep, there you go. Turn around. They're like Clark Kent.
Hold, hold.
So for this uh school project update, um, for those of you who were not able to make the work session last night, it was very informative and it was very enlightening. Uh, Sarah Ross, um, she is from a nonprofit called Undaunted, Undaunted K twelve. Very philanthropic group. Um, she gave the presentation. Um, if any, she has since sent me the presentation and I will share it with everybody here and. I would love for it to get put up on board docs. Um, and I'll make sure Terry, I send it your way as well. Um. We can, I'm sure she would be more than happy to come and join us here and have a robust conversation. Uh, she was kind of advised to move along quickly last night, um. Due to attention spans, um, and she did a great job and the town council was very engaged, super informative. Um, very exciting. Um, and so I definitely, we will make sure that we stay in touch with Sarah because she also, their group um helps walk you through. Um, exploring and and receiving the the tax credits. Um, and then works with you on how to implement. Um, as far as overall the school project. Mr. Mahoney and myself have been working closely with. Um, Left Field Slam um and have been looking at schematic design. Um, who they have been working very closely with our educators, the high school. With a facilities um and making sure things are right sized. Um, that we are, you know, if we're, if we're over square footage, looking at ways to reduce the. Reduce and keep it tight without losing any programmatic um offerings. And so far we've been successful. Um, the the we, it will be publicly presented. Um, they just wanted to get some initial feedback. They'll clean up their their their. It literally was pieces of paper. We were going old school. We had the pa- paper laid out. And drawing red marks and black marks all over it and and um and it will be, it will be updated and shared. Um, we shared it today with our town manager and deputy town manager to make sure that they stayed up to speed. Um, and then it will be coming to um. The individual town council, school building and and us here at the school committee level. Um. What am I missing? We have a meeting, uh, oh, we have our, oh, yes. What I love is uh Mr. Mahoney is like the face of South Kings Town often. And uh Mr. Mahoney and Mr. Spiegel from Left Field walked around to all of our butters that in a particular very wide radius that we determined. Um, and knocked on every door and handed a notice to every uh neighbor. Um, that we were having in a butters meeting this Thursday at the high school from four thirty to. Five forty-five.
In cafeteria.
In the cafeteria at the high school, um.
And all are welcome. Anybody in the area, anybody wants to attend, it's it's open to the public.
Yes, and um and it is to inform them of the drilling that will take place, what it will entail, the noise ordinances, the the decibels, um, the whole nine yards. Um, what kind of equipment they should expect, any sort of anything. Um, prior to that, we are also meeting with Chief Moynihan and anyone he deems um necessary from first responders. Um, at the safety complex early in the day. So they're up to speed with what's happening, just in case someone's like, this is big, huge crane out in the field. And and the dispatchers are getting phone calls or there's, you know, trembling and, you know, they want to know what what's going on.
And especially this being our first major dive into the project, we want to make sure we're doing right by the butters and by again. I'm just pulling a Mike Maron right now and not speaking into it. Um, and we want to do right.
Mike watches these, watch out.
Um. But also too, we have runs in the past when police and fire have used Curtis Corner and we're getting calls of, you know, why, is there everything okay over there? And we put signage out, but you know, it's. So again, with this being the first step in, we want this to be the first step, but every step along the way, we want to make sure every branch of the town knows what's going on, every neighbor knows what's going on. Again, to be as transparent as possible, but also to be good neighbors along the way.
Yeah. Yeah, and um, I think Chris got a really uh got a kick out of meeting all of our neighbors and uh he likes, he loves South Kings Sound, so I think he was also real estate shopping. Um, and then so fa- just following, so we'll have the butters meeting. It will be, it will not be. Livestreamed, but it will be recorded and then posted to YouTube. So it's not going to be an interrupt because it's really for our butters. Um, and it's to have a safe place that they can ask whatever questions they might have and we will answer them the best we can and make sure everybody's informed. It will be recorded and posted to YouTube after the fact. Um, but we don't want to, you know, make it seem like it's all like a live, you know, interactive. It really is for the folks that live right in the area.
And it'll be all of our technical specialists. It won't just be Chris and Phil, uh, Representative Gilbane will be there. So if anyone has any site questions. A through Z, kind of what what they have and what they've been thinking maybe for the last six months or a year, they can come forward and say. While you're doing this drilling, what does it mean underground? What does it mean above ground? You know, so they can.
Yeah.
Do you have an estimate about when the? How do I mean, when you'll actually kind of like start the drilling?
Yes, we've um, we requested that they um give us time to notice. Um, but it looks as though Gilbane is saying the week of October seventh. Um, and then, and it has been coordinated with Terry Lynch in the athletic department to make sure that it's all, it it, um, you know, the athletics will schedule around it. Um.
And the but, so we went out to the butters to and did a notice from the school department, but a mail notice also went out to an even wider range of.
From Left Field.
From from Left Field, yep.
Um, and then immediately following the butters meeting, we will have our very next school building committee meeting at the town hall. So again, it's Thursday. At six P M and we will be at uh town hall to. Uh, we have a, it's a, it's a robust agenda, but it's more administrative. We're not going again, we're not diving into schematics just yet. That will be at a a sub- a soon. Um, subsequent meeting, but at the moment it really is just kind of dotting i's, crossing t's. And um sharing our feedback about the butters meeting. Um, there's a, there's a few more things on there. Um, but again, it's just more administrative um at this point, but I'm super excited um for. Slam and Chris and um and Phil to come forward and be able to start presenting the schematic design images and really, it's really.
The ideas they've had and that the ability of what they've been able to do with the footprint they have. And even they've been excited from a design end of what they, because what we've asked for, what CHIPS groups ask for, what the school committees, what everybody's put into them. They were excited to make it all happen and move all the pieces around and it seems like it's. Really, from what we've presented from stage one to now, it it's going to be pretty amazing. Once it, once everybody gets to see the design.
And they're super excited because we have, so Mr. Manny and um it, he was part. He was the colonel for the state police, but he was the head of the um school security task force in Rhode Island forever. Um, and so they're really excited to work with him to make sure of, you know, our safety vestibules and and whatnot are really. Um, are are really intruder, as intruder-proof as they can be. Um, and then Luke Murray, um, our deputy town manager, he has a ton of experience with. Um, the exterior design of of municipal buildings from a previous life that he lived. And uh so he's excited, it 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 really is just come, we have a really great team of people who are working on it and I'm, we're really excited to to share with you guys um kind of the progress we've made and where we are.
And just just one more thing we have is a. Part of the discussion is we're not just plopping a new high school, we're not plopping into athletic field as we've had with them is ongoing with all the members of this team is. Currently, what are we, what should we be doing? You know. Tomorrow, what should we be purchasing? What s- security system should be looking for? We're trying to get ahead. Usually in in projects like this. That isn't as decided until year two or three, but we are trying to be as far ahead of it so we can keep current with our current capital planning, with our current day-to-day purchases, our current. Safety trainings to, when we do unlock this or we do open up this new school that we're lockstep with everything new. So district's not being left behind. We're. Keeping the vision of the direct, myself, Doug Snow, um, and the other leadership in the district of how to keep the tide going in the right direction towards new build. From infrastructure sense.
So I just also want to say. Um, thank, thank you to Kate for going to the town council meetings because you never know when they're going to say, oh, we have a school committee member here. So thank you for that and and for all the work that you guys do when you show up at those meetings. And I think. Chris um from Left Field is also there all the time. And it's super helpful because you never know when they're going to be like, we need clarification on this and Chris was, is, he's always there. And I I mean, that's to me kind of above and beyond and I'm just really, I I. Y'all did a great job in in picking these vendors because they they're doing an excellent job as are both of you co-chairs. So thank you for all your work. And for um. Slam and and Studio Jade and and Left Field, I think um you you guys have done a great job and I just am, I'm very. Very appreciative and I and I hope that the community sees how much work, due diligence, thought, care. That you guys are all putting into this. So I just wanted to bring that up to say thanks.
I I'm going to share some secret, secret sauce too is. Part of what we've been very lucky in this project, we we got very lucky with the vendors that we chose and vetted. But they've actually even added on since taking on this project, direct to level positions of people from other companies who've worked all around the country. So even the vendors we've been with have become more robust during our time and they're assigning these people who have done project again. Projects ten times the size and they're being assigned to our project is the first part of, you know, first part of the new job with Left Field or Slam or Studio Jade, so. It's not, it's not me. No, it's not me.
They're very excited about this, so because we're, we're real, we're. The other, the other piece too, and I want to just kind of wrap with this, is that. One thing we kind of keep making sure we, the eye stays on the fact that yes, we're designing for twenty twenty-seven. And yes, we're designing maybe even to twenty thirty, but also keeping in mind that. Who knows what twenty thirty-five is going to look like? We really don't know. And and keeping these spaces um meeting our current needs, but also making sure. That they're future-proofed as much as we can, right? To make it as flexible as possible so that we can ensure that. Um, ten years from now, we're not like, oh, we built a, we built an ambulance in our, in our school and now. Uh, the ambulance technology is completely shifted into the twenty-fifth century. With, yeah, we, yeah, hovercrafts and. And A I leading the charge. So um, we are doing the best we can. Um, sometimes we have to be reminded, we have to remind ourselves, all of a sudden we get very myopic and be like, well, we want to make sure. That we have this for that program and it's like, but keep in mind, we want it to also be able to grow, expand. And it's like, but keep in mind, we want it to also be able to grow, expand, move, shift, so. Um, it's very exciting right now. A lot of work has been put into it, and, um, I do have to thank my, my co-chair for helping sometimes keep me focused.
In fact, it goes same both ways, same both.
Thank you, Ms. Mahoney. Okay, moving on to discussing an action on policy twelve fifty. This policy is is calling for an action to be straight as we had policy six one oh five. It's kind of like they were duplicate policies. So we took the better of the two and put forward the recommendation to strike twelve fifty. And then bring sixty one oh five forward for a first read.
So if I'm hearing correctly, you'd like a motion. Uh, are we retiring twelve fifty? Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to retire policy number twelve fifty, school visitation.
Second.
Could I just ask a question because I'm a little unclear about the duplication, because if we strike twelve fifty now, that is stricken. Sixty one oh five is on its first read, so it wouldn't become policy until our next meeting. Or sixty one oh five exists.
Sixty one oh five currently, as we sit here tonight, twelve fifty and sixty one oh five are the same.
They're identical.
So by striking twelve fifty, sixty one oh five lives on. Now, what's before you, the the first is an amendment to sixty one oh five. So but once tonight, if you do vote to strike it, you will still have that policy in place at sixty one oh five.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes, so, um, again, sixty one oh five is in front of you for the purpose of first read. If you have any questions or you see any amendments between now and when we bring it back for a second read, you can email Minister or James.
There's a typo, um, under the purpose, so I could, I get an email about that, but it more of a question about the volunteers, we used to have a group that trained volunteers when they came in the school, and we stopped doing that. Um, I know, people in confusion, never heard that before, but, um, I guess there's a section where we say volunteer shall adhere to rules and district protocols for a few things. And I would, I would love to, I don't know if this is the right place to do it, but somewhere to spell out what, do they need to read the whole policy manual? Are there certain policies that they're adhering to? And should they be acknowledging that they have received and read? What, what are the policies that are relevant to volunteers that they should really be aware of, so that we have consistency in our schools and the way our students are be treated, you know, whether it's a volunteer or, um, or or staff member that we have they're adhering to a way of kids being cared for and treated, um, in the schools and uh, I don't necessarily want to give them the entire policy manual and say you have to read it because nobody's gonna do that. So can we focus in on what are the things volunteers really need to know before they step into our school, they're mostly gonna be parents, right, I think? Um, but before they step into our schools, what are, what are like a few essential, um, policies that they, we need to know that they are aware of?
So there, there's a type on the school year, or I'm sorry, that the year, twenty twenty-four, um, at the top, but, um, did we revise this on June seventeenth? I mean, I
Did not fully rewrite it, it, this policy was re-written in nineteen ninety-seven, so when we brought this policy to the table, we looked at it and we also found twelve fifty, which both policies were kind of similar, have seen. These strikeouts that you see, and which is only one on this particular policy, um, and at the top, school visitations, um, is, to my knowledge, the only um, amends me to this revision.
So I don't, I don't remember fully revising this with two reads and accepting it as as revised, so I would take out the June seventeenth date and replace it when with, when we're officially revising it.
Policy goes for the second read and is approved?
Otherwise, you know, ten years from now, it'll be like June seventeenth, you know, September thirtieth, or what, I mean, just kind of, just to make sure.
So I just want to, I want to circle back to Brad's comment, so in taking your comment and in reflecting on this, so it looks to me that this particular policy is about school visitation and volunteer identification policy. Different than a volunteer policy. And so I wonder, I'm wondering if that should be, uh, whether it's a, if, I, I mean, it should be a pol, we should have a volunteer policy. Um, to make sure that they are trained and that they do follow our, you know, a certain standard. And yes, it doesn't need to be an entire handbook, but it should be a volunteer handbook, which I believe we had at one point, if I'm not mistaken. If I'm reflecting back to twenty years ago, when I used to volunteering kindergarten classes, we had something because cares volunteers would train, we'd go through a little training and and get a little certificate. Um, so I wonder if that's something that we need to revisit, dig up, because there's nothing that I can see in our active policies, so, but there has to be something somewhere. Um, I know Peace Dale had it anyway, um, so uh, maybe that could be something put on the policy subcommittee radar to have a volunteer, um, behavior policy, just like we do with our staff and students.
Well, are you suggesting, um, a separate policy for volunteers?
Yeah, because this is school visitation and volunteer identi- identification policy, meaning like if I'm just going in for, for, I'm not volunteering, right? I'm just going in to visit in some capacity. Um, I do it all the time, actually, with school building committee, you go in and you have to sign your book and you put a little badge on yourself, and it says that you're a visitor. And you have to be escorted to where you're going by a staff member. That's different, you're identifying I'm a visitor. And same thing with volunteer, what Mr. Shear is referring to, though, is a, a volunteer policy of behavior, like you have this particular requirement as a volunteer and how you're communicating with kids, whatever, it would be different than this and it, and probably needed.
While I agree with you in that aspect, I will look at the definitions here that were put into this policy. Um, it says that the volunteer person who works on occasional or regular basis at the school to support efforts of professional, personal, has approved in a sign, so this identi- this behavior piece that you're speaking to is already in place.
But we don't have a policy around it.
We don't have a policy, but any volunteers that are coming into our schools like any chaperone, so to speak, those folks have to do B C Is.
Yeah, they get a B C I check, but there's no training around them, there used to be. You used to vol, if you volunteered in your, go, like I said, going back fifteen, twenty years, you volunteered in your kid's classroom, you actually had to go through a, a volunteer uh, cares training process.
Okay, thinking the same thing, we had cares at the time.
Yeah.
And we don't now.
Correct.
So that's kind of fallen through, yeah.
Why the policy is not, doesn't, yeah.
But it, it starts to go there in this policy, because it says volunteers shall adhere to rules and district protocols for confidentiality, as well as other rules and regulations of the South Kings Town School District. Volunteers shall not discuss student and school-related issues in the outside community and shall not access confidential information files or records, so it starts to talk about it. So I don't know if we need a separate policy or to to expand this one with with more in insight and depth to it, I, I agree. And I love the idea of training. I think we need to, if we're gonna put that piece back in, we have to, like, who's gonna do it, where, yeah, who, what, when, where, how kind of thing? I, I mean, this is a great start, I'm like, God, we're going up two policies that are both the same out there, but, um, I'm not sure we need two policies, maybe just more another section and Miss Flynn talking about more protocols, more training, and those kind of things.
Okay. Thank you. So. And to policy eighty-three twenty-five. This policy here has, has some things that were striked out. Some of the members on the policy subcommittee felt that the, um, discipline for students who had certain behaviors on the bus and were being kicked off the bus then created an absentee for that student depending on, you know, social status, right? And so we, we worked on this policy for quite some time, trying to figure out how we could not say, hey, it's okay that you're doing that, right? Um, but then finding a solution that would allow that student to still be in school.
So I like what I'm reading on that, I'm curious if, if again, and I'm sure it is, because the policy subcommittee is quite thorough. Um, I'm assuming that other, um, legal has looked at it, other district policies have been looked into as to dealing with the same thing. Um, have we, uh, has there been a, like, what level of? Um, these are great, and it would be ideal to allow for the, for any child to continue to, to ride the bus um, under certain restrictions, if there is a disciplinary action. Um, but is there, like, is there best practice that we looked at, um, when forming this policy, I'm assuming? But.
Best practice was that the student was getting thrown off the bus. And, you know, it would be week-long infractions of the student being thrown off the bus, which generated absentee.
Right, yeah.
So, you know, this is, we have, so she worked on our team, and, you know, this was one of his biggest concerns was the absentees in how do we take that away? As well as still, you know, try and discipline the behavior, right? Um, so, and I mean, again, we've worked on this a lot. Um, and happy for any feedback in, in how we can make it. Yeah.
Good question, Paula. So when kids are being kicked off the bus, who was making that determination? Was that the bus driver, the bus company, the, our administrators? Who was, who was responsible for determining that?
Oh, it's a combination of both bus companies as well as administrators, because they have to have that conversation depending on what that behavior was like, right? And so there has to have, there has to be that coming around there, but oftentimes, I think it was more on the bus side of.
Right, and, and, and I do think that the input of the bus driver, that's key in this, when we, you know, the person that's seeing the behavior. The, the adult responsible for, for the children i- i- on the bus at that time. But it seems to me it ought to be this, a continuation of the school building, so that one of the building principals would be responsible for discipline, and and discipline is, is is really redirection, education, it, um, it, it's not punishment, so to discipline a child and and whether it's a um, detention or whatever that the building principal decides. Um, I'm, I would really, it says building administrators and or staff will be responsible uh, will respond to behavior infractions. I would just like to see building administrators, not staff. I, I think it needs to be the building administration with the bus personnel input.
I think, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I think, I don't know, I, I understand what you're saying. But, so I think this is the right approach, one, because it ensures that the school, the, the, the bus drivers are reporting to the administrators what's going on, and I'm not sure that always happens. Right, the bus drivers sometimes handle on their own, say, you gotta come sit in front next to me, and that's the, the way they handle it. Um, I disagree a little about not letting other staff handle these issues. You might say building administrator, they're designee, so you know, they're the point person. But there are some kids who have a very strong relation, relationship with a staff member other than the administrator, who might be the best person to handle. So, you know, if they're already seeing, um, concerning behaviors in the classroom, it might be s- or, or elsewhere in the school, it could be that the building administrator is not the ideal person, isn't the one with that relationship, and they, they might want to say this is the better person to handle it, because there's, like you said, there's a continuum from the classroom into the school bus.
I mean, that the administrator has to be the disciplinarian, they just have to be the decision maker, it has to go up to that level. And then if that person says, you know what, our mental health personnel is the best person to deal with it, then that's how it's dealt with, right? But I, I just want to make sure that it's, the, the person that's doing the decision-making is the assistant principal, the principal themselves, not, you know? And then if it's delegated to another administrator, another, it, it can be a teaching staff, like you said, that's fine, as long as the decision-making is in administrator.
So just, just a little background to the, to that point. So some of these students, um, you know, they have, they, they have one-on-ones, they have TAs, right, they do have behavioral issues, there is things, um, in the past, there has been things that had triggered that child or made that child very angry. He's acting out now, and the only way that they could get that child to calm down was to get that staff member. So, I mean, in putting this policy together, we wanted to make sure that we were supporting those students as well as supporting the whole general population of bus riders, um, in, in trying to make it fair and just not, okay, so you did that, he's a like, we've had students that were put off the bus for the whole year despite having behavioral issues, and we can't do that. So.
I think we're all in agreement on that, I think it's just kind of a, a couple semantics probably just need to be clarified, I really like the verbiage of, um, the, um, building administrator, designee, um, I think that is super helpful. Um, because it does open that door to what Carol's describing, and, and again, um, making sure that we're addressing what's going on with the child, um, and not just tossing them off the bus, so, um, yeah, no, I like the good, good first read, great, great conversation.
Just one, one other thing, well, it's not a change, but in, in the existing policy, at line sixteen, it says pupils must remain. Just one, one other thing, well, it's not a change, but in in the existing policy, line sixteen, it says pupils must remain outside the danger zone, I don't know what the danger zone is. If that's a Top Gun reference, maybe.
There is a highway. There's a highway to it.
So, so, I would, I would just probably use plain spoken language for, to describe whatever the dangers.
Roadway, roadway.
Yes, no, no, no dogfighting with Russian air jets or anything.
On that note, Paula, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned at nine. It actually switched to nine oh one as I was speaking.